A call and meeting to order. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, the Lichetans. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. By your motion to adopt tonight's agenda. Second, any comments or questions by the board? Call in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Rule of minutes of four fourteen twenty-five. Any comments or questions by the board? Call in favor? Any opposed? Can carry. Road report.
Good evening. I'll keep it brief. Since the last, since our last meeting, we changed a hundred and sixty-five feet approximately of eighteen inch culverts on Pond Hill Ranch Road that were all failed. Uh, had serious deficiencies or complete collapse. We did, we started some, some cleanup over at the Stone Bridge on the Stone Bridge building next to the waterway. And we're kind of partnering with Polley Meadowway Natural Resources to uh get some new growth established in there, clean out the waterway and that little homemade dam thing that's in there or whatever, so. We started grading. Probably won't be grading tomorrow because of pending evening storm. Looks pretty potentially spooky and there's no point in spending all that money and all that time to actually have it get worse than it originally was, so.
So I almost got lost on the way here because it's a deep hole.
And um just buttoning up some other small things and basically that's all I've got other than the bridge closure, which I know has a, its own line item further down in the agenda, so. I will leave it at that unless anybody has any questions or comments.
Anybody have any questions for Joel? Carol?
Additional update on the Route one forty closing?
There is not. Thank you for asking. I didn't write that down. We're still waiting to find out about some funding on the, in the total project price before we commit to saying yes, two weeks. Oh, we can't do the second half of the work and how long? We only need one week or vice versa. Yeah, correct. I'd still love to go for that window, but as we get closer, I want to make sure that that there is at least two weeks in advance notice. For everybody to make plans and whatnot. Plan accordingly, so. I will, I will update next time we actually have an answer.
Hey, thank you, Carol. Any com- other comments or questions?
The mower has been out, absolutely.
It's working great.
It works well. Works very well.
What, not great?
It works great.
Pond Hill looks really good. I was over there today, so it looks really good.
Awesome. Yeah, we did a little ditching also. You know, who's needed, we were in the area, we had to trek over the course of close to a mile of road for the six, the six different, or um, excuse me, four different culverts that we, that we changed, so. Uh, so we did some, some much needed ditching improvements while we're right there. It's a lot cheaper to do it while you're there than it is to move the machine out and then back and we like to get to a place, start there and be done when everything in that area is done, so.
The good planning.
Yeah.
Lot of lunch there too, isn't it?
There is a lot of lunch. We could use a jackhammer. Not gonna ask for it right now, but.
Sound of a dicky today, digging.
You'll have to show me how it works, please.
Just pull the trigger.
Thank you, thank you guys. It looks great.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Community development?
Um, so I'll be quick tonight too. Uh, the the past couple of weeks I've been working on the garage site rec hub project, that, that's the outdoor recreation roundtable project. And there was a meeting that took place between the town, the um, Polley Meadowway Conservation District and some of the Town and Trail Steering Committee on the fifteenth, um, so we could update the, the team, the landscape architects and architectural team on all of the other planning projects and um, projects and studies that are underway in Polley right now that could impact um, that one. And then there was a site visit that happened on the twenty-fourth. Um, thank you, Mark and Jeff and Paul and everyone at the Highway Department for welcoming the crew. They also visited, um they were taken out on the trail network from um, folks at Slay Belly Trails. So that project is underway. Um, started to, Fourth of July planning, uh, Polley Recreation with uh, the Chamber of Commerce and the campus have been working on the July fourth planning, starting to get into that. Now I reported it before, but it's all on one day this year. Um, hopefully, hopefully, yes, no rain. Um, on the fourth, yes. Um, and then the other thing that I wanted to share with the board tonight is that the MERC projects I had originally anticipated having some R, an RFP for the end of April, but it will take a little bit longer to pull that together uh, before we can start to organize that for bids. Um, meeting with Senior Center, I believe we scheduled for May twelfth uh, to review the scope of work that proposed there. And um, I started to work on, on that RFP and pulling that together, so. Got a little sidetracked, but we were back on it. And I think that's it for my.
How did we, um, did you hear anything from Welch's office? You were, last time you said something about one point five, possibly get one point five million towards our garage.
Yeah, that request was made, it's probably three weeks ago now, um, and it came from Paul, it would be sent back to Paul, but I have not heard anything further.
Yeah, I'll tell you in three weeks, it's kind of early.
Yeah, it must take a little while.
Okay. Any questions for Sarah?
Thank you, Sam. Sarah Thomas Wimmy.
Thank you. Town managers report.
Okay, um. I guess I'll skip to the easy stuff first. Um. We've got a liquor license request for the, 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 the outdoor consumption renewal at Willback Vineyard. If someone wants to make a motion to approve that.
Should approve the liquor license for the.
Please second that.
Mark second. Any comments or questions by the board? No abstaining? All in favor? Want to abstain? Motion carried.
You want to sign it on the top, what does approve, please? Um, the federal cats issue, the person that wanted to be on the agenda has asked me to put her on for the next meeting's agenda. Um, she felt maybe that the South Street Bridge discussion was, was probably going to take a lot of priority, so um, we'll move that to the next meeting agenda.
We'll scratch that.
Um, East Polley Cemetery, I think Cheryl, you had asked to put that on the agenda.
Yeah, they had asked me because it's the town, if they could have at one point worked with the town about some equipment, there's some of the stones are really, really heavy. They have a specialist coming in and they need help putting the stone up with the cement. I'm not sure all the details, but I know we had to do some of it with the Jewish cemetery, so they just don't have, Danny Fuller, I know they tried it, but they don't have the capacity to hold up some of the bigger stones. So they need to upload it, so they know if there's a time that we can work it out with the department to see could be done. Uh, whenever, or be at your beck and call whenever you can do it. I don't know if that someone, how the machine works, if it's something that he wants to give his, you know. I don't know how long it's going to take. I think there's probably the little stone they can do, but some of the big ones are, I mean, like Danny Fuller, they try, there's no way they can even attempt to get them
We could certainly take a look at it. The board needs us to help us do that, then we can do it, then.
You okay with that, Alan?
Yeah, the cemetery up here have like a special jack or something for operating stones, because.
One behind the Capitol fall?
Yeah.
Regular, uh, I don't know, I could ask Karen, it's a good question.
Yeah, Karen.
I know Danny, Danny Fuller didn't know because they had tried, um, the ones at the Jewish cemetery that they, I was there when they put up one as big. Some of these that are down are really big and really heavy in the tops, so they're trying to bait, maybe they're not going to put them back on top. Maybe they'll put them on the side, but they still need help doing it. So I don't think it's like a long, long project. Because the smaller ones they can do, it's some of the really heavy ones, just to get them upright and.
You okay with the road crew doing that, Mark? Helping out? You got it.
I'll check with Aaron, uh, Karen's GCC if not, but then I'll let you know.
Sounds good.
Okay, um, I think last meeting you had indicated that, um Wanted to attend, um, but I don't know if he's here or not.
I haven't seen him. For the DNA Trail Trail, he asked to get on the agenda for this Monday. He was going to give us an update. And uh, that was one that, that was a gentleman we appointed to take care of the DNA Trail Trail.
Um, he's been in, in contact with me as well. Uh, um, the DNA Trail Trail is, um developing a management plan, I believe, is what he's uh, wanting to talk with the boards out.
Okay, if you get ahold of him, ask and, and see if we can get him back on another agenda so that he can come in and help the board and the public what's going on. Thank you, Sarah. Hey, Paul?
Okay, so, um as we all know, the South Street Bridge has been closed, um by the state of Vermont for safety reasons. Um, last week they were, they did the annual inspection. And I guess it was Wednesday they started it, and Wednesday they asked us to downgrade the weight capacity to the bridge to three ton, which we did to, was it Tuesday?
Tuesday, it was the late rain.
Okay. Um, which we did to the best of our ability based upon the timeline, which is like immediately. Um, the crew affixed a couple of different signs. Warning the, the weight load limit. Uh, Wednesday they came back. And I went down there mid-morning and met with the engineers.
Was that Paul?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. Thanks.
Sure is. Um. And at that time, they they told me, well, we, we've counted at least, I think it said eighteen trucks had gone over the bridge that morning. Um. So then they, they, they were doing more analysis and um pointing out some of the deficiencies of the bridge that have occurred just from the previous year. They, they're almost a year to the date last year and he said, you know, there's, see this spot right here? That was, last year there was paint on there. Now it's all flaking off and rusting. And said, you know, see that hole right there? That was just me tapping it with a hammer. Um. So then they advised us that we needed to close it uh, to all vehicular traffic. Uh, we consulted with District Three Coordinator uh, with AOT, Brian Sanderson. And reviewed the detour route that we had used previously, uh where the signs were, what kind of signs they were, et cetera. Agreed that that would be the same detour route, route. Although everyone knows that Cross Road and, you know, Boston Road is a, a different way to go. Um, Joel coordinated with uh, Village of Granville, Town of Granville, uh, Wells, Washington County, um. And there was, there's some work that I think Villa, the Town of Granville is doing very similar paving work that we felt we didn't want to um, detour our traffic through there, because I, I think it started next week or the week after.
Yeah, uh, Washington County uh, is, is going to be working on County Route twenty-four, which if you come from the Granville end, just before you get to Pine Hill and take, to take thirty-one to come to Polley. You could break off the left and go down by the bowling alley and the Amazon Building and whatnot. Uh, they're going to be mulling that up and then paving it, and that starts the first week of May. I don't know how long that goes on for, but um, afterwards, it's, it's a potential possibility. I just hate to change up everybody's, you know, the official detour route. Multiple times, I think we should kind of do it once and do it properly and leave it, but.
Can big trucks go on New Boston Road? Can take that turn down by the?
After the, the discussion with the Town of Granville Foreman or Supervisor, whatever his title is. Um. They would rather not have big trucks go over the. You turn off in the Boston Road on a crossroad, there's a big culvert right there at the intersection. And then you get about three quarters of the way down crossroad, there's another large culvert, large angry culvert, which um, I think they're both structurally sound. Um, they're just, you know, it, it's not the best route to gravel road. I think I'm not sure what class it is, but it's a, it's a gravel road. It's not the, you know, the best course of action for, you know, um anything larger than like a dump truck or whatever. So.
So as of, um just a little bit of background, um, for the bridge um, replacement project. Um. The state had recently secured the, all the easements and rights of way that they need to do the project, um. Uh, probably in the last couple of weeks, I think I reported it in one of those support meetings. Um. I saw just this morning, there's a draft Act two fifty amendment permit because the HOP energy property is under Act two fifty jurisdiction. Um. And I saw Act two fifty had sent a draft proposed, um, amendment to that permit. Because they required a Act two fifty amendment. Uh, I saw a draft of a wetlands permit, um, today. And the project is just, was, was just basically, um, completed design and ready to go out for bid. Uh, supposed to go out to bid in, I think, Mar- uh, May fourteenth. Um. I had asked uh, the engineers, you know, because at one point, the, the state indicated if we need to close the bridge before we're ready to move on the project. Um, we could probably get the temporary bridge in sooner. I'd been advised that, um, that was contingent on, uh, the plans not having been completed yet, which they are now completed. Um. So I'm not sure that's an option. The state is still, as of this afternoon, I spoke with the engineers, um, with the Bridge Inspection Division of AOT. They're still crunching the numbers to see if there's a way we could potentially open the bridge to vehicular traffic uh, on a one-way basis, um. I've been reluctant to discuss that because I don't want to give people false hope. They are, they are still digesting their, their data and, and the inspection report to see if that's a possibility. Um. Representative Patty McCoy has been um very forthcoming with it, uh, the Secretary of Agency Transportation. Um. Urging them that we've got to find a solution that we can't have with the bridge closed for. I've heard anywhere from it's going out to bid in May. They hope they could secure a contractor by July. I've heard anywhere from sometime in the fall temporary bridge to even up to December, I've heard. Um, so Patty McCoy is really lobbying to, to, to the state to find a solution to at least open the bridge to um you know, regular um pedestrian vehicular traffic. Ie perhaps not um larger trucks. But the state's still crunching those numbers, if you will. Um. I, I have heard some people that are unhappy with the, uh, the the posting for the detour that we, that we placed, the same that was approved by the state. The last time we had to close a bridge in twenty twenty-one, um, I've left waiting here back from the state of Vermont, uh, District Three Coordinator, if we can get access to some of those. Um. Flashing those light, those, um I don't know what they call, message, message boards. Um, to draw more attention to it, um. I've driven the detour a couple of times and you know. I, I so I kind of, you know, some people I just, I just can't, you can't make them pay attention. Um, I've had reports that the tractor trailer has even gone around the sign that's down here on uh, at the intersection of, um.
The template do it fine.
Yeah, and gone around the sign and, uh, and I thought, I guess, didn't think it applied to their tractor trailer, I don't know. Um. I think we all know what you might call that. Can't fix people not paying attention. Um. So that's all I can report at this time, um. I hope by this week sometime I'll have better news.
It was up on our website as well, if the town websites are important, yes.
Yeah, so it went out on BT Alert immediately, um, when the state closed it, and then we put it up, uh, like might have been an hour later. There is not, there's an alert feature on the new website, so it's, it's on every single page of the website and the Polley Recreation website because they're connected.
That got us kind of quick. But it's what we have.
Yeah, sure, it sure did, uh. Seems to be the, the way, the way that the state operates is, uh.
We, we thought we were, we were ready.
So what is the plan for emergency vehicles? Coordination with other towns and villages?
Well, we've, the fire department has coordinated with, um uh, um Granville. Um. I'm not, the rescue squad has not indicated what, what they have communicated with. Um. We, we have been in some discussions with, um Peter Kelly as far as emergency vehicles. Um. Accessing his property to allow emergency vehicles to traverse his property if need be.
It just came into just soon.
Oh, yeah, he's on, yeah, so. Um. So that's, that's what we've those are some of the discussions we've had.
But the bridge is open to pedestrian traffic?
Yeah.
The state has advised that the pedestrian traffic could go on the bridge.
So if you go down here and, and you park and let someone out across the bridge and meet someone else, then you can just do a U-turn in the road to come back down?
Yeah. A number of, a number of people have asked me, can we leave a car on the other side and you know, I'm, I kind of said, well, if you're not blocking you know, if you're not blocking someone's driveway down there. I think that's, I don't, we're not going to do anything about it, but if it starts turning into a parking lot where everyone's hung on top of each other, I don't know. We, we might have to revisit that, um.
Of course, I can see that part of it definitely. So the sidewalk is, um, it's got it taped off, so you do have to go down the middle of the bridge, which people need to know, that's why that's roped off. I went down, he went down the middle, so you're not going to, it looks pretty rough on the sides.
The other thing that I should mention is that I've had reports of people from the public moving our, uh, highway department signs and placing them in different areas and even taking them apart and dropping them in a ditch, and I'd really urge the public not to do that, um. These signs and the placement of the signs are something that, um feel very strongly are, uh, important and, you know, it's under the um, direction and guidance and consultation with the state of Vermont of where they're, where they are and how we place them and um, for the interest of public safety. We can't have people just moving our signs, um, so, you know, to anyone that may be listening to this tonight or maybe jump on after the meeting and listening to the Zoom. I, I please ask you to, to leave our signs where our signs are. Um, we're trying to, we're trying to make it as safe, uh, for the public as we possibly can, given the circumstances. Um. And as, as I stated, hopefully we can, we can improve, um, some of the things that we've done uh, to make it more visible. Uh, and I, I've said this in other meetings about other some people you just can't make pay attention. Um, we, we do the best we can. Um. But it's, it's difficult to make everyone pay attention for sure. I mean, I, I even heard there was somebody went down and like hit one of our signs and then backed up the road. Like, I don't know what they thought they were going to do, like a a dukes of hazard thing to jump the, I, I don't even know. I don't know what someone was thinking. But it's things like that, it's like we hope that the public can use some common sense and.
The sign was frustrated, barricade damaged. I checked it out today to, to see.
To, to what end? I don't know what that accomplishes.
Yeah.
I just want to know where the detour sign is on thirty-one.
Somebody to be the bonus phone.
When did it get put there?
I was there about three thirty today, it was there.
An arrow that shows going towards the New Boston Road or just a sign that says?
Well, I said the bridge is closed.
Yep.
That's it.
With an arrow pointing to the New Boston.
The detours, the detour starts over on the Granville side more so.
We need.
And it's, 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 it's noted for both directions, so if somebody's coming from the south and they're trying to go north. Or if they're coming from the north, then they're trying to go south. Both routes of travel around Route thirty are marked properly. Uh, or, or at least to what I have from the previous bridge closure from AOT.
But, but they, the detour they're talking about, you don't want the big trucks on that road, right? They said the big.
Yeah, yeah, I, I almost actually.
Cars only.
Yeah, so for, for all purposes. New Boston Road is not actually the detour route. There's only one detour. And New Boston to Cross Road to twenty-two A is not actually a detour route. Um, it is a public road, so nobody can be stopped for going over it, but larger, larger equipment and tractor trailer units should not be utilizing that. It's really, you know. If anybody's been over in New Boston Road, there is a couple of tougher corners and then turning on to Cross Road. Uh, there's a couple of spots on there too, with the, the, it's pretty, pretty ugly and that road's already getting pounded, both the New York and Vermont side uh, by traffic, so it's, I, I mean, it's posted for thirty-five coming off from Route thirty-one. If you've been over New Boston Road, I, I would say, in my opinion, thirty-five is a little bit fast for that road, uh, especially now with the amount of extra traffic on that road. Um, another reason I would not, even with the Town of Granville's permission, make Boston Road to Cross Road the official detour, it's just it's really not the safest route for moving that much traffic.
So where is the detour?
So the detour is actually going to go through Wells, it's one, it'd be thirty-one. This is talking from the Granville side at itself and then trying to come back north, so you'd you'd be going to one forty-nine to the Town of Wells and then over to Route thirty.
I, I'm sorry, I'm lost. I don't know where one forty-nine is.
Community Health Center is.
Okay.
Where Apollo Fuel.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, so you'd, you'd go by there.
So you're not coming up thirty-one at all from Granville?
No, no.
There's detours.
And there's detour signs down there.
There is signs out there, yes.
That, that happened today, I guess, or?
Nope.
That happened, right?
On Thursday, so, so Wednesday, the, the official word came through that the bridge was closed Wednesday. We threw a hasty closure out Wednesday because we got notified about an hour before the end of the workday. Um, it does take about half or better of a workday to go through and prepare all the signs, paint the barricades, get the barricades out there. Go back to the garage, load up more barricades, bring more barricades, deck out there. It's not a five-minute job, especially to do it right and take everything in, into consideration. It's not a five-minute job, especially to do it right and take everything in, into consideration. So we threw out a hasty closure thir- Wednesday, excuse me, which would be your one point three miles sign at Upper Road and two point eight mile sign at the intersection of Thirty-one in New Boston. Thursday, after speaking to Brian Sanderson from, from VT Trans um, and getting a reprint of the previous bridge closure and detour route, we put that out, we put that full detour package in accordance with the paperwork from the previous bridge closure. I also would like to say at the same time, I, I know there's a lot of people concerned about fire and EMS and stuff and, you know, rightfully so. Before we even loaded a sign into the truck, uh, Washington County Department of Public Safety, who only fire and EMS or dispatch through, was well aware of it. They made Fire Chief aware, they put it out on all of their announcements and also Rollin County Sheriff's Office, Vermont State Police, and then shared to all local law enforcement before, before the last traffic went through whether the road was actually closed. And they're very good at creating a mutual aid plan even on the fly, but this one they've had from years ago too, so uh, I understand it's a concern and everybody has every right to know what the plan is, but I, I would just like to tell you, you know, it, it's there and, and that's, you know, that's something, if I'm going to close the road down too, it's one of the first things on my mind is, okay, what happens when there's fire or whatever.
Sammy, does that answer your question?
Yeah, we're just, we're concerned because we're close to the bridge and we're having tractor trailers. People are coming down from New York, most of them are New York cars, but there's some Vermont, and they're nasty when they ask you, how the hell do we get out of here?
Tell them, read the signs.
But, you know, I was like, you know where that sign was, two point eight miles, where the bridge said it was closed?
If I recall, we also had at the New York-Vermont border, uh, during the last, and we did have one of those electronic message boards. We have not been able to acquire that yet and, um.
I just don't know why tractor trailers would want to.
And they just don't read.
Talking about.
Yes.
So, so first of all, thanks for all you're doing, I, I'm sure that wasn't a fun situation to go through, so no, it's a pain in the ass. But four years ago, when you guys closed the road, I, I drove it yesterday because I went to Tractor Supply, right? And on the way back, I was, I was amazed that so many tractors and trailers could get by so many signs without, to some, to take a look around. But four years ago, coming off of Main Street, or whatever you call it in Granville, you make a left towards Thirty-one, there was a detour sign right there, before you even start heading towards Thirty-one to come up to Vermont, and I didn't see that yesterday, I don't know if that's.
So headed east, so headed east coming from.
You're heading north, yeah, so, so you're heading on Main Street.
On, on Main Street.
Yeah, heading Main Street East and make a left to go north towards Polkney.
I can.
By the old bank there, the, the, last time you guys closed the bridge, you guys had a detour sign right there.
Yeah.
And that might be helpful for a lot of the New Yorkers that, because I think they get sucked up two miles up onto Thirty-one and they're like, well, you know, screw them, they keep going.
Then they get back.
Right.
I'll, I'll see what I can do with that one, we did have to drive one into the grass at the old bank there under the World War Two clock um, at the permission of the village of Granville. You know, I think they're, they're willing to allow us whatever we feel like, but, um, I was kind of, I, I felt the same way headed from, from the Wells direction towards Granville as if I was coming from Wells and going, you know, back to Polkney via Thirty-one. The signage from that area was kind of hard to do as well, so there's one over by Brownie's Lawn Care. Or it's also a fitness center, you can't.
Two of those.
I think you got a question?
Uh, just took a couple of comments, the detour that you spoke about coming off Main Street, heading towards Pine Hill, it, it says detour with an arrow. If you don't know the, the place, you can either pick, um, Pine Hill or you can pick the other route, it doesn't say that, you know, not go up one, um.
Three Thirty-one.
Yeah, Thirty-one.
Yeah.
And it's orange, it's so bright, it says Route Thirty-one Detour.
Yeah, I, I think, I know what you're talking about, it does, it does seem a little.
Just take your pick up.
Because you, because you have to, so you got the slight quarries, you got, you got QSI and whatever other ones on the Upper Road, right? So if they get a delivery and it's coming from Route Thirty North or whatever, we still have to mark to get back to Thirty-one, I can totally see where the confusion is there and I, I will do my best to, to try to come up with something in conjunction with the AOT or, oh, I'm sure, I'm sure Love is now, but.
The only other concern, and I know we're supposed to be on the Boston Road, but for those of us that cut over by debonuses and then go on the crossroad over, which again is not a safe place for big vehicles, but when you get up to the end and you want to go onto Twenty-two, either north or south, because the rock cut is there, you can't see cars coming. Is there any way we could do a sign, like slow traffic entry and something, because unless you get out of there with your foot on the gas and a car comes around?
Is that a Polkney jurisdiction?
It's New York jurisdiction.
Yeah, see, that's, that's.
A lot of people have gotten, there's been a lot of accidents on the New Boston, that's why they say no trucks, because there's been people killed in that.
Yeah, but you know, owners are crazy. I cut a crossing and go out, but I turn my car so I can see both ways and then I love it to get up.
Yeah, what else to be.
Years ago when the bridge was closed, that was one of the detours that everybody took, that's why it's fresh in our minds too. I mean, otherwise we're looking at round trip thirty miles or better, just to go back and forth to town.
Yeah, seventeen miles. Okay, you have a question, yes?
Excuse me, Jeff. Uh, Mark, Mark Flynn, uh, two questions of, well, first I'd like to thank for adding the sign down both by debonuses and the top of the, uh, other hill with saying that road closed, you know, one point three miles, local traffic only. That's considerably slowed down the amount of traffic down here considerably. Although the very next morning is when the guy hit the sign up by the bridge there, cruising right along, but uh, say thank you for that, that considerably, uh, took care of a lot of the problem down here at, close to the bridge. And secondly, Paul, could you please elaborate on the temporary bridge? Because I believe I listened in on that select board meeting at the time that they said if they had all the easements, they could have a temporary bridge in within two weeks. And I didn't catch that tonight, if, I wasn't clear on that, is that still a possibility?
I, I don't remember the, the two weeks, um, part of it, um. I did, I did remind the, the engineer, I guess, I think he's the uh, project supervisor, I can't remember what his title is, but I, uh, actually got a letter from him right here. Structures Project Manager, I, I did remind him that the state had indicated that, um, if this, the current bridge failed before we were ready to move forward with the project, that they could move a temporary bridge in there sooner and he, uh, um, m- made the caveat, which I, I don't remember that ever being the caveat, that, well, that's if we had not already designed the project where, and now we've already designed the project and the scope of work, uh, in, uh, incorporates all of the project, including the temporary bridge, um, so that's not an option, um. I, I think, uh, Representative McCoy is pushing back on that, um, a- as am I, to, to see if we can get a bridge sooner, uh, rather than later, um.
Is there anything we can do as the public to help you, like squeaky wheel gets the grease, of course being respectful, but is there, you know, if we got people calling to help reinforce you, would that help or hinder you?
I think, I mean, at this point, I'm, I'm giving the, the state and the enge- the, um, the bridge inspectors a little bit of room to, you know, I didn't even want to call them today because last week I had a conversation with him and I said, well, how much time is, are you guys going to need to make a decision whether or not, um, we can even open it, uh, you know, as a single lane, et cetera. And he said, you know, I can, it could take me up to a week, so I called him this, this afternoon and said, I know, I'm not trying to like pressure you, but I've got a meeting tonight, I know people are going to want to know where you're at with it, um. And he, and he basically said, we're trying to, we're trying to look at all the numbers. We don't want to sort of do this piecemeal, we want to look at everything we got and see if there's a solution. Instead of like, look at this and, oh, here's a solution, but we didn't consider that, so they're trying to be thorough in their analysis, uh, keeping in mind that safety is the main priority. So, you know, if, if, if we get a, no, the bridge has to stay closed, then I think that's when the, you know, the guns have to be blazing to say, get this, get us a temporary bridge like sooner rather than later, um, so I think that's where I think is the best approach at this moment. Um, if we can get some relief, i- if, if they can find within their analysis that there's enough safety by either, um, you know, making a one-line bridge, then I, I think I'm going to give them that room to make that determination as, if they don't make that determination, then we have to go guns a blazing, I think, on the, on the temporary bridge.
Gotcha, and what is the best way to keep informed of those updates, so you're not getting twenty-two calls a day? Like, can we put it on the agenda for the next few weeks to have the bridge closure discussion automatically on the agenda?
Yeah, we could do that, and if, you know, um, we did our own VT Alert, uh, that the town did and the state also did their VT Alert, and if you look at the last, uh, VT Alert, notice if anyone in this room or on Zoom have signed up for VT Alert, you know, that, that says, the state says currently is closed until further information, so I think, I, I know it's hard to, um, show some restraint because everyone's, you know, inconvenienced and frustrated and not knowing, um, but you know, when, when it says until further notification, I think people just have to a little bit of patience.
Uh, thank you.
That answer your question, Mark?
We, we'll, we'll continue to have it on the agenda because, like I said, you can't, you can't make people pay attention, some people don't do VT Alert, some people don't look at the website, so yeah, we'll continue the conversation in this forum. Might not have a lot to say, but at least we can say what, where we are.
Great, that answer your question, Mark? Yes, it does, and I just lastly wanted to say thank you because Kim did call up and ask Paul if her clients could possibly park there, you know, being, leaving room and stuff and walk over the bridge. A lot of her clients can't because they're elderly and things, but the ones that can definitely help, so thank you for that.
Okay, you're welcome. You have a question?
Yes, um, I live in Myer Kraus, I live on south of South Street Bridge, um. Today was the first day, because last week we were off from school, so today was the first day the buses were running and I'm not the type of person to just like, okay, let's go and try the, you know, on a school bus. So my kids rode their bikes to school, I would like to hear from the horse's mouth, what is the route that the school buses are taking now?
Oh, God. You'd have to ask us this morning, you'd have to ask us, you know, the school board.
Last time the bridge was closed, I, there was stories about whether or not those culverts are.
Yes, we have no control over that at all. You would have to ask the school board, Eric Heyer is the, is the chairperson of this part of the school board. I would call and ask Eric if he could get you that.
It's not so much for, like, I need to know exactly where my child is at every point, but is it road safe?
Right.
For these buses to be on?
See, we don't determine the routes for busing, but that would, call Eric Heyer though, he will, he will get you the answer.
Well, when I checked it out, this afternoon, yeah.
I don't know, Patty, you, you just clearly got on the bill.
Yeah, our next train is next week. Regarding the bus, I know, like, our son lives down there with four kids and they were out playing in the road because somehow they heard be ready twenty minutes early. So they were out playing, seeing, oh, he sees all the bicycles on, on the ground and the kids are gone. He didn't, he never saw the bus, so we're wondering if the bus stopped down the road.
It stops at the Barten Yard and they have to come to it, yeah.
And, okay, and then that's where they disappeared to.
It was.
Please ask Eric Heyer, because that's important.
Yeah, I'm just worried, like, I feel like there should be a, and I'm not trying to do, you know, implicate anything, but there should be communication between the town and the school as far as if that's road is safe, the culvert is safe for a bus to go over.
All the culverts, I would think ours are safe for.
Because if it eats a litter angle, I don't know the ton limit, that's, that's my concern.
So, do you know?
I, I don't, that's, so that's Granville, the, the culvert's in concern or in question or on the crossroad and that's going to be the town of Granville, and I really don't dare to speak to another town's culvert, specific culvert rating. Uh, I can tell you that I know that the quarry trucks go over that loaded.
They're about ninety thousand.
That load is much greater than load of a school bus with a kid in every single seat. What the difference is in, in weight, I don't, I don't actually know that number, but, uh, I think, I don't think it's a bad idea to ask, like Jeff said, maybe reach out and ask.
Yeah, because I, I would.
I'm sure if it was a concern of the town of Granville, I, I, I would say that they, you know, they would have raised some red flags, but, um, I know it's not flagged for emergency vehicles and those are also pretty heavy. For whatever that.
Emergency vehicles are not supposed to go over that, somebody said.
No, I said it's not flagged, so they, they can go over that if they need to, so it's not, yeah.
It's not respected, no.
I, I can ask Eric and see if it's, if there was a, if they consider.
We need to, we need to find out, because I would be very concerned as a parent where they're going.
But you can.
Paul is, we'll reach out to Eric too and ask him, okay, and then you could, you know, find, we can find out. Okay? Any other questions or on this discussion matter?
So it's just up in the air, we don't know anything.
No. We're all on board on that.
I'm, I'm just going to make a comment and then I'll shut my mouth, but we all know this bridge has been a problem for a decade, right? We knew it kind of closed four years ago and I know it's not up to you guys at all, but the state is in charge of a thousand bridges or who knows how many bridges in the state, right? And, uh, and I know it's easy for me to sit here, a guy that just shows up once a year to these meetings, right? So I'm not taking away from all the work you guys do, but it may take greater advocacy on the, the part of this town to advocate for us when we know for a decade that that bridge is falling apart, we joked about it or kind of had a little bit of laugh just a month, a month and a half ago about how that sidewalk, that thirty-five children travel into town all the time is super dangerous. You shouldn't walk your dogs on it, you shouldn't ride your bikes on it. Like, we all knew that bridge was falling apart, literally falling apart and the, the state really can't, we can't expect the state to act in our best interest all the time because the state has a lot of things to balance. So going back to the squeaky wheel gets the grease idea, I do think going forward to try to help avoid situations like this, it would be great if somebody on the board were to advocate on part of the town that we have something going on, not for a few months, not for a couple of years, but for a decade, it's visibly in disrepair and we need someone to help with it, so we don't get into these situations.
Well, so just, just so you know, the town's been very proactive with that bridge. We, we have it all set up. We changed, has zero parts to the town, there is eleven main dollar bridge.
Yep, yeah, I'm a little aware of other plans.
Right, and it's just the, the fact that this happened a little bit be- before all those plans. So the town has been, Paul, very good about getting, beginning the engineers here and stuff.
And we have, to your point, we have advocated for that bridge to be changed and you get put on a, a list.
Right, yeah.
With the state, to your point, state has how many bridges? And this one finally filtered to the top because four years ago it failed inspection. So we might have still been down on the list, but now it's pushed to the top. It just happens like that, the Thrall Road Bridge, we started that process to get that changed now eight, nine years before they even, it just wouldn't. Eight, nine years before they even, it just wouldn't, they wouldn't bring it up and they're, and that's, that's a little frustrating for us.
Yeah.
But we do do diligence on our inspections and trying to push these bridges up.
We are really lucky that we have Patty McCoy and Terry Williams that are there. So I have to say they're advocates for us as well, because not only does she here, but she lives on the other side. So she has been one that's been really pushing and being, you know, so if you have, she might be one you can contact and who to talk to and see who to contact too, if you wanted to have, because I know they've been a big part of helping us in, um, you know, keeping it going.
Great.
Well, we have been, we have been doing.
Thank you. I, I appreciate it.
Yeah, well, you don't know if you don't.
Right, yes.
Yes.
Do you, do you all find it, um, typically helps or harms to have somebody like this gentleman give a ring over to Ms. McCoy or um, any of the other elected officials that are servicing our area and like offer to take them out to coffee and explain who your concern is and like.
Can't speak for them, but coffee might go.
I mean, I do, I do know that.
In other words, like because we're so small and they're right there, is there some value to him actually taking it and, and not hamstringing your plans? Cause you all architect these things very delicate and over time I've watched over the last couple of years, this week in, week out, you'll put this together. You're reaching out, like this is, this is not just a, a, you guys didn't get caught surprised, this, now you said, Mark, it was just a little bit early. The thing you do is always happen. So if we're out here having our feelings and rightly so, not having the full information, not being privy to like all of the inner workings, does us reaching out and just bringing up the topic, does that make things better for your efforts? Or does that actually?
What, what, what would you say?
Only them in such a way that they, I don't know, what's, what's the real skinny behind?
But thanks, Paul alluded to that earlier.
I mean, I know, I mean, they, they know it's an issue and they're, they're pushing. Um, um, I talked to Patty McCoy and Terry Williams today. Particular Patty is pushing very hard.
Sure.
Whether or not doing what you're proposing is gonna make the pusher harder, I, I don't think so. I think she's.
Patty is the whip.
Yeah, yeah, no, this, no suspicion that she didn't know. It's more along the lines of is there a way for an average citizen to at least support the effort and or get on the list that gets in front of who Ms. McCoy reaches out to, whatever committee makes these decisions, whichever ones have the escalation clause on the list, like, like, i- i- is there any value to that extra, or is that just distracting them from the, the business of the state and just to make ourselves feel better?
They're both very nice and they might just say, thank you for your interest. I'm, I'm putting down, I'm working on it. I mean, and they say they're, we're not the only place in Vermont that has bridge issues with all the flooding and stuff that's, where they're at, where, where not the only one that has a lot of things to deal with either.
Sessionist is about to go into his closed down. Okay.
If I may make a comment, if it's, I assume it's okay, as Paul said, Patty was in today. And Patty was in the town clerk's office too. And she is staying on top of it, just like Paul said, and as soon as she has some more pertinent information. Labels were done for her today for all the residents on the bridge. On the opposite side of the bridge, Jones Road, Upper Road, thirty-one and everything, where she will send a personal letter to them and how to contact her with questions.
Good. Thank you, Carol. All right, any more on this topic? Not hearing any? We'll move on on the agenda. Anything else, Paul?
Joel wanted to say something?
Yeah, um, maybe we, towards the beginning of the bridge topic, we discussed parking on or on or around the, the sides of the bridge. If we could just leave some space between the actual barricades and the vehicles, uh, in case we do have to get in there and move barricades for whatever reason or, you know, it, just, cause I, I'm not gonna know. Or, or maybe if you're gonna leave your vehicle there for more than twenty or thirty seconds, I don't know, a contact number someplace in plain sight on the vehicle, um, so that we can, we can get ahold of somebody. I, I don't know, some sort of unforeseeable event, we, we do need to be able to get to those barricades, maybe go by, maybe fire to put their UTV through there. I don't, I don't know. Um, or maybe we just gotta pull the barricades and open it to one lane, but with ten cars off the, all over the road on both sides, it's gonna be rather difficult to achieve, so. I would, I would ask that we do something of that nature.
Okay. All right, anything else, Paul?
Not on the bridge, no.
Any more on your agenda, on the town manager's report?
Thank you, Paul, for all your.
You're crushing it.
Yeah. Meetings and conversations and phone calls and.
I do have under transact in the other lawful slugboard business. Speaking of Terry Williams, I was contacted by Terry last week, I think it was, um, he had had some discussions, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Joel, with, with you about dead trees in the road right away. In this case, it was on Upper Road.
Correct.
Terry actually was driving on Upper Road and uh, came into contact with the dead tree that had, or dead, I don't know if it was a limb or a branch and had fallen into the road right away. Um, that caused some damage on his, uh, truck. And he has asked that the town, uh, reimburse him for the damage on the truck. Uh, I told him I would bring it to this board, uh, to discuss. And so that's what I'm doing.
So, I guess I understand. So the tree was already down? It fell as he was driving? What happened?
According to Terry, the, um, he had had a conversation with Joel. There's all these dead trees in the road right away that you guys should be cleaning up. And, uh, he didn't see a tree limb or branch had fallen down sort of at, actually at the level of this mirror. And he didn't see the tree had fallen into the road. And he came in contact with it, his, his mirror and his antenna were damaged. Uh, and he provided me with an estimate from, uh, your coachworks for the repair and is asking the town to reimburse him for the repair.
Going through the same thing years ago with Beecran, Route Thirty. A tree actually fell while I was driving. And hit on my vehicle and after a million phone calls and everything, all I had to say was an act of God, sorry, not doing anything. I feel like this falls into that same kind of category.
We had a car fresh on a property about twenty years ago. Fully fresh again.
I mean, there are a lot of dead trees. I can speak even for Hampshire Halla lot of trees. We get big branches down when there's a big storm, half the branches on top. The trees are there, fall onto the road, um, the right away. And sometimes I can go around it, sometimes I can't move it, sometimes we have to wait for Dicky coming, move it so we can get by. So I know that does happen a lot, but it's not.
So you're saying? No? No?
I would probably fall in, in, into that camp, yeah. That was many of the branches and trees.
Carol?
Yeah, I think it, I think it happens more so than.
Yeah, that's. So you're saying no? Right? Consensus of the board? Don't, it's a consensus of the board.
So there had been some questions about the, um, HRA account, um, that I finally heard back from the auditor. So I have a report on that, that they indicated the HRA is reported as part of the general government expenses. And was, as we know from the town report, eighty-three thousand eight fifty-four forty-eight for fiscal year twenty-four. I had asked her to clarify whether it's a special reserve account and she said it's not a special reserve account, it's included in Fund One Eight Five, which is a pooled account. And it's part of the total general government expenses. Um, there was some questions on that, so I don't know if that answers the question. Um, I do know that, um, I had expressed some concerns about, um, you know, making sure we're, that we're, uh, in compliance with HIPAA and the auditor suggested, which I figured she would, that, um, she suggested we work with a third party that specializes with this to, to deal with our HRA, uh, expenses. So I'm gonna be exploring that, I guess, um, just so the board knows, the combined fund. I think we discussed this um, between the highway department, the town office, town manager's office and the library. Uh, fiscal year twenty-four, we estimated HRA expenses to be sixty-eight thousand four thirty. Uh, we expended number just said eighty-three thousand eight fifty-four forty-eight, so we had underfunded that line item by fifteen thousand four twenty-four forty-eight. I don't know if that answers the concern that, that was expressed.
That was you, Carol, huh?
Yeah, I guess I'm still a little bit confused, um, so was there, you have, have it in the general and the highway and you have a budget for it. And when you sign the board warrants to pay these bills, I'm assuming the goalkeeper charges it to that account. And then I'm assuming at the end of the fiscal year, you look at your last revenue expense report, compare it when that audit report comes in. And all of a sudden, then that audit report is zero.
Well, that, that's actually not, um, that.
That's what I need an explanation.
That report is a report that's generated by me, that's not part of the audit report. Um, it was an oversight on, on my part to include, um, that, those numbers on that report. And one of the reasons is I'm, I'm over the last several years, I've, I've grown uh, a little bit, um, more aware of HIPAA compliance and I'm because it's a pooled account, I'm, I'm trying to reconcile how much do I report for the highway department? How much do I report for, um, the town clerk's office? How much do I report for the town manager's office? Uh, so that report that you're referring to that's in, in the town report is my report, that's not an audit report. Um, and I, I would say it was my oversight to, to not include those numbers in that report, but again, we, we did dis, this, we do disclose on the wages and benefits, um, section in that report, what, what the HRA expenses are in a combined HRA expenses.
Okay, Carol? You okay for that?
I don't understand how the library subsidy part of it works, but we won't waste time on that tonight.
Okay. All right, anything else, Paul?
Um, not at the moment, no.
Okay, Rutland Regional Planning Commission? Thank you, Paul, for everything you do, cause that's.
Um, okay, so there were two meetings in April, the Commissioners and the TAC, and I unfortunately was not able to attend either one of them. I had conflicts and illness and all sorts of things, but the Commissioners' meeting took place on April fifteenth. Um, and from their minutes, uh, there's a few things that would be of interest, I think, to this board, um, had, this had been previously brought up, there is an open meeting law training happening on Wednesday, May seventh, uh, being held, uh, by RPC. Uh, if there's interest. Um, also in the minutes is that RPC has been informed by Vermont Emergency Management that, um, the BRIC, uh, twenty twenty-four, this is not our project, that, but the BRIC funding is, has been canceled. Uh, so it says any applications that were selected for funding under BRIC twenty twenty-three but not yet awarded have also been canceled. Uh, so that funding is going away. It was a big part of their local emergency management, uh, planning at RPC. To, with the best of our, my knowledge, the BRIC funding that we have for the project, um, is secured that we're in the midst of. And there is a meeting coming up next week that Paul and I will be attending, um. So let's see what else. Um, they're also up, um, monitoring other state and federal grants for, uh, impacts from federal decisions. And just as a heads up, they, they are, the RPC has had three fully or partially canceled grants. They include the Health Equity, Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant, Climate Pollution Reduction Grant, and it doesn't say what the third is, um. So some of that funding is starting to be pulled from the RPC for some of the grants. So the RPC is also meeting with, they're in the midst of the, uh, regional plan update and meeting with, um, all of Rutland County's uh, communities about the future land use map, Act One Eight One. So they have scheduled a meeting with Polton, this is a working meeting, uh, with the Select Board on May nineteenth at six thirty. Uh, this is to review Act One Eight One implications for planning in Polton. It's a little bit related to the downtown designation to the, um, designated downtown district and the East Polton Village Center. So that's been scheduled as a special meeting for the Select Board. It hasn't been, um, warranted yet, but it will be, um, shortly. It's May nineteenth at six thirty. And then.
Here.
Yes, I think here. I'm trying to figure out how many people will be in attendance. I know there's already Planning Commission members that will be coming. And they do have a working meeting set up, so it may have to be moved to the fire department. They've asked for a workspace, so since we have enough people coming, we probably just want for the fire department.
So I'll be at the fire department.
Six thirty or seven?
Six thirty, May nineteenth.
Okay.
Um.
It's a Monday.
It is a Monday. It's the.
Right in between, we have a meeting on the twelfth, Select Board, special meeting on the nineteenth and then one on the twenty-sixth.
Not usually.
You do have one or we don't?
Usually don't.
What's that? Well, the twenty-sixth is Memorial Day. Yeah, we're not having a meeting on Memorial Day. We'll push that out to June.
All right.
My goodness, that's our anniversary, boy.
So the, um, TAC met on April twenty-fourth, um, and again, the agenda was related to the regional plan update. And, um, the Transportation Committee heard from Ethan Peppin about the transportation policies, um, that are in the regional plan. Um, and those minutes are not yet out, so I don't really have an update, but that was the agenda item. Um, and I think that is it for regional plan, for, for regional.
Anybody have questions to say around that?
Thanks, David.
Thank you.
I did wanna, um, let the board know that the expansion of the designated downtown, um, that we uh, met with Jamie Leon recently was approved, uh, so that, um, designated downtown now does, uh, include the, the, the whole of the project, proposed project on the campus redevelopment. Um, I wanna let the board know that May twelfth, our meeting at six thirty. Um, I have a village meeting that evening that starts at seven thirty, so that probably have to be a, uh, a shorter meeting.
Yep. You wanna warn it and go a half an hour earlier?
I guess we could if you wanted me to.
We can do it in an hour. We can set the agenda for an hour.
Okay.
We'll keep it. All right.
I do have one contractual matter for executive session that I wanna talk to the board about.
Okay. Public comments and concerns.
Sorry, guys, Mark, Mark Flynn again, if you don't mind.
Yep, go ahead, Mark.
Uh, question for Joel, um, I understand that, um, signs are, don't know what you have for signs and not for signs, but to your point of trying to keep that uh, middle lane open or space open for you to be able to potentially. Space open for you to be able to potentially move blocks or, or get emergency personnel there. Do you have any signs that you could add to help get the word out or? Um, I was thinking possibly since there's only nine participants on. The Zoom here tonight, you know, Poltony, I, I know, uh. You don't like Poltony Neighborhood Watch, but a lot of people do pay attention. So I was thinking maybe I could put a post out there that we did. Watch the select board meeting and the request was made to leave space like presently there are three wide up there right now, so there's. No real chance of getting. An emergency vehicle if they had to through there. I like the idea of contact information in the windshield. Um, just didn't know if you already had any existing signs you might be able to repurpose if you thought that would help with people pulling up there.
I, I currently do not have any signs of, of, to cover anything of that nature, Mark. It was, um.
Right.
Yeah, I, I could actually order even more signs based off of this whole entire event, to be honest with you. Um, no, I, I don't, I don't have anything currently for that specific purpose.
Okay. I mean, I do have some scrap plywood or, you know, but I didn't want to go putting signs on your signs because there's rules to follow and things and that, so just. Leave it well enough alone and try to get word of mouth out would be the suggestion.
I think so. If, if we decide to do something, I'll probably refrain from adding additional signage because it, it just. It actually gets to be confusing. Um, as to the main, getting the main point across of maybe just don't drag down there. If you don't live down there. But yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll figure something out for now. Uh, I think the public should, should encourage spreading the word of turn to leave, you know, of vehicles. Nine to ten, you know, a nine to ten foot wide path down the center of, uh, leave that open. That's, that should be sufficient for any. Vehicle or piece of equipment, the Austin V trans or whomever may need to access that area.
Okay, and we.
Any of the neighbors, they'll tell you whose car's there. We can tell.
No, if I'm just, and yeah, yeah.
We can tell you. Right now there are three vehicles on this side, one family.
So we live close enough, we can try to be proactive and, and have conversations with them as we see it happening because safety is critical and a big concern. So. Just asking what you guys thought about it. So thank you all for everything.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Mary?
Um, I was just wondering if there's any, um. News on when the village town merger committee will be, um, starting up their meetings. They haven't met in months.
So, um. The, I, I don't know the answer to that question. The auditor, excuse me, the, um. Consultants had a, a couple lingering questions with, from the day that I directed maybe best answered by the auditor. Uh, the auditor has answered those questions. Uh, so the, the last, um, information I had was the consultant was gonna. Digest the, uh, auditor's comments and relook at some of their data. Um, I can check with them to see where they're in that, in that process. Um, but as of right now, as I understand it. They, they have the information from the auditor that they felt they needed to, to finish their analysis.
So is the consultant, um. A contract that limits the time that he's doing? You know what I mean? Does he, does he have a year contract with?
Um, I don't remember the time I had, but I think we're well within. The grant window.
We are within the grant window.
Yeah, I just don't want it to. Get delayed and delayed and delay and we lose. You know, the, the use of the, um, the consultant.
Sure.
And this is just a comment. I know there's been a lot of highway department. Issues in town. Um, there still is a resident, uh, who lives on On the Avenue in East Poltony, and she's been waiting well over four years. To get her drainage problem solved, and I was wondering if there's any update on that. On the avenue.
On the avenue?
On the green.
On the green, I'm sorry.
It's Shane.
I apologize.
Oh, Dig Safe, uh, has actually been notified and I marked that out. And there's, there's a plan in, in the future. I just can't tell you a date yet with. Ongoing. Bridge changes and.
Yes, I, I understand. I just, I just didn't want it to fall by the wayside for another year or so.
Absolutely not.
Great. Thank you very much.
All right. Any other comments or concerns? All right. So I hear a motion to sign the board order.
Wait, um. I'm not, hi, this is Richard. I'm not sure if it's a good time for me to chime in or not.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I'm, I, I apologize. I was working with, um, Paul on some of the. Um, delinquent properties and I have one, um, right up by me on Morse Hollow Road that. Um, I've been trying to get an auction date for it. I think they haven't paid for like over fifteen years. Um, I was wondering. If the board it has, can create an agenda or if it is on the agenda to, um, clear these properties out.
Rock, please, Eric.
Um, as, as you and I discuss, uh, I think we discussed recently. Because of the, the way the laws changed, the last communication I had with the attorney's office who assists us with the. Going with tax sales. There's different procedures and I, I've asked our attorney, like how other towns are. Handling these additional burdens that, um, the town has been encumbered with. And. They give me some advice, albeit. Um, a little mixed, um. So. As you and I discuss, typically. We would do, do delinquent, um, tax, uh, collection efforts. En masse, um. But there's a, there's a burden that the town is, is now, um, encumbered with, which I'm trying to grab, grab. Grapple with and understand what exactly we need to do to be compliant with the new statute. Um, and frankly, I'm, I'm not at a level of comfort that I, that I know exactly what I need to do. So I, I really have to have further conversations with our council on, on what our next steps are.
Is, is there, is there any way that, that, um, that people, uh, because I, I, I know you told me it's gonna be announced in the paper, but it's. But we never know when we're gonna have it. We never know when it's gonna be in the paper. Um, is there any way to create a, a waiting list or an email list to when the decision is made and, and, um. And, and it is li- lined up to be dealt with, that the, that the interested parties would be able to be made aware that that, that action is getting ready to be taken?
I guess I would just encourage that anyone who has an interest in it to. To follow the select board meeting minutes, which are posted on the website.
Okay.
It's, I guess that's the best answer I could, could give you.
All right. Okay. Yes, I, I, I understand the, um. The, the, um. The, the, the problems with staying compliant and it's, um, yeah, it's an unfortunate thing, but yeah. Very good then. Um, I'll keep on checking the minutes and, and I'm, I'm sure I'll be listed on there and thank you very much for you guys' time. I appreciate it. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Larry. Thank you. I hear a mo- motion to sign the board order.
Yes, we're making motions to sign the board.
That dog's too fucking dumb to drink out of a, a, a pool. Oh, sorry. I'm sorry.
I just can't see the doggy question.
It's on your permanent record, dude.
I wonder if I'm the dog.
You drink from pools?
Now, uh, I hear a second to sign the board order. Any comments or questions by the board? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Motion going to executive session for contractual matters.
Going to one V S A, section three thirteen A one. Make a motion that sport binds a premature general public knowledge. Clearly place this board or person involved as of stand for disadvantage. Certain matters related to contracts were discussed outside of executive session.
In several seconds, all in favor? Any opposed? From Carrie? Thank you, everyone. We're going into executive session at seven forty nine for contractual.
Second session, discuss contract.
Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? And Carrie?
Let's see, isn't there a second part?
Very, thank you folks for making this time. Pond water, pond water. So Alan Glenn made a motion to leave executive session at eight oh two, Valley, rotten. Second of the motion, um, motion passed, all in favor, no action taken.
All right, motion to adjourn.
Make the motion to adjourn.
I would say. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Right.
Uh, right. We're done.